Everyone, it's July 24th, 2023, and I'm going to call the city council meeting to order. Uh, this evening, we have Father Brian Lowe from St. John Catholic Church, uh, to come forward to give the indication.
Evening, everybody. It's a pleasure to be with you. Let us pray. Loving God, we ask your grace and blessing upon our mayor and our city council. We ask your blessing upon all of us as we strive to do your will in the world. Um, guide us by your knowledge, but guide us more, um, fully by your wisdom that we may know your will and do it with courage and strength. We ask all this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Father. Please show me the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is stable, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Carrick. Councilmember Dizine?
Here.
Councilmember Seifert. Okay, thank you. Now, we have a couple of amendments to the agenda. Um, Greg, I think you should have one.
I've got one. Um, John's out tonight, but he asked me to add, uh, the, uh, exercise equipment, um, not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars at Dublin Park on the walking trail.
Is that going under your line item?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, um, I think Brian's gone to get a resolution number on that. And it'll go in Parks and Rec. I've already talked to Cory, and Cory, he'll handle all the, all the invoicing on that. So we'll move it from special project money into, into Parks and Rec.
We'll add that as item B under your line item, and we'll get a resolution number, uh, when Mr. Kilgore returns. And we also have an addition, uh, to the presentations. Uh, we have Eddie Lobdell here from AECOM to give us an update on the flyovers. So we will add that to our presentations list. And with that, the agenda is approved. Um, next, we have approval of minutes number 2023 dash one three dash RG from July 10th, 2023.
Move to approve. Take it.
Okay. Motion by Shaw. Second. Teddy, you had second? Okay. Um, any discussion? Ready for vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Dizine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert. And motion passes. Under presentations and awards, we have one presentation from AECOM.
Hello again. Thanks for having me again, and, uh...
I think he's got it up.
So we're ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. Um, so Steve asked me to come and give you guys an update as far as the status of your project, where we are, the steps we took to get here, and where we're going to go to bring it to completion. I'm not going to dwell too long on the, um, basic project information, but I needed a light on this thing. Okay. Um, because you guys know your project, but it's been a while since we talked about it, but just some project details. So this is phase two of the interchange, um, to access Town Madison. This will get you a full route, right interchange to and from Town Madison from five sixty-five westbound. Was let construction last August. The successful contractors, McKennis and Miller Miller Joint Venture, contract amount thirty-seven million. Duration seven hundred and twenty-four calendar days, so just product two years. Must proceed January of this past year, completion in January twenty twenty-five. LD is three thousand dollars a day past that date. And then as of this month, we are thirty percent complete on time, seven months, and amount paid out, which is eleven point one million. We generally don't run, you know, neck and neck, but it's just a coincidence on this one. It's not, you know, I wish I could say it's a sign of good management, but it's a coincidence. Um, so you guys have seen these visualizations before. These are just a representation of the project, um, what's out there today, as well as what will ultimately be built. Ramp A, B, and then we're obviously working on ramp C and D, and the walls and access associated with those ramps. There's five sixty-five looking eastbound. Ramp B and ramp A in place. And then here is sitting on ramp B, so you've got the stadium kind of off into your left. And then looking off in the, I'm sorry, looking off into the distance, you've got ramp C, which is top level, ramp D, which is second level, and five sixty-five. One last visualization. Here is, um, standing and looking towards Toyota Field. Here's ramp C, and ramp D would be kind of over your left shoulder. Um, you know, just moving on to some of the happening since the project started, you guys have probably heard a lot about tanks, scene tanks. Uh, first thing the contractor did was got on the north side of the interstate on ramp C and started scratching around, and a very large tank came to the surface, and then one became five, five became twenty, and twenty became twelve hundred. Um, so they uncovered twelve hundred tanks. Um, we didn't know they were there. They were apparently put there before AlDOT built, built five sixty-five, so they'd at least been there thirty years. Um, we've gone through extensive testing of the tanks with ADM, and as of a month or so ago, um, ninety-five percent of them have been delivered to Huntsville Solid Waste Facility. And there's still, I believe, eighty of them still out there in a roll-off that are pressurized, and so they'll be picked up later this week and taken to a facility in Texas that's designed to, um, dispose of these type, um, canisters. They range from four feet to three feet tall, about eighty pounds apiece, so it was plus or minus forty tanks, tanks that were, um, eliminated. One of the problems is by design, these tanks have a foam in them, and they, it is heavy as bestest, so it had to be, you know, coordinated through ADM. The shipping was limited. So luckily, it's behind us now. Um, another question is who's paying for this, and AlDOT is on the hook for the costs associated with it. Um, here's the roll-off that the tanks were going in. Um, again, we were limited by the weight of them as to how many could go in each tank, and how many could be carried per load. And then here's, you know, best we can tell, these things were put in there when somebody on the property just to, uh, dispose of them, and they were just put in a draw and covered up with dirt. All right. Um, any questions about tanks before we move on? Sure? All right. Um, just some more pictures of construction. Here's ramp C. We talked in our previous meeting about, uh, the unsuitable geotechnical material out there. And here's the excavation of some of that material, and it's brought up, you know, almost like layers of a cake, and then the, uh, bridge columns are built on top of it. Here is, um, you know, this is standing ramp C, uh, bridge vents and caps, and then this will eventually go over ramp D. This is from March of this year. Here is ramp C walls. This, this is from May, so this is ramp C on the northeast side. Um, these are the steel H piles. That's the bridge will ultimately be carried, you know, the load for the bridge will be carried on those steel H piles. And then this is the MSE wall, and it's, uh, the canister stabilized earth wall. It's just made to support the, you know, the weight of the backfill and the weight of the roadway and the live load of the traffic. Um, we talked about blasting previously. Um, the blasting is over. The blasting was required. This is where ramp D, um, comes off of the south side and goes on to five sixty-five eastbound. So the blasting is complete. This was a picture from, you know, they put blankets over the blast sites, and so you'd think there'd be material flying, but there's really not. It's all contained by the, by the mats. This was some material we got onto the interstate, and luckily, um, we had a rolling road, roadblock out there. We didn't expect this, but the blast down the seam and just shot out the base of the, the, uh, rock fill, oh, I'm sorry, the rock face. Um, this is earlier this month. These are the concrete girders going in. These are a hundred forty feet long, seven feet tall. Um, I'm sorry, six feet tall. They weigh, I believe it's fifty-eight tons apiece. Uh, these came out of Birmingham, and this is setting of the girders. This is the eventual ramp D, and this is ramp C. And there's the way it sits today. It's, uh, obviously three spans of concrete girders. This is the last of the concrete girders for the project. Six of them per span, eighteen total. And then the ultimate bridge deck and everything will be built on top of that. Um, here's another view from kind of standing up on ramp C, but I thought this was a neat view. This is, uh, you know, the way the wall, walls on ramp C are today. They're almost complete, and the ultimate steel girders will sit on top of this seat, on top of this seat. So it's kind of a ninety-degree angle, and the steel girders will span between the two.
Hey, all those walls, it is, they're like dead men that go back in. Are they like geofabric, or is there cables or something that goes back in at times?
Yeah, they build in layers, and, you know, they put a layer of stone in then, and they put steel straps that are attached to the, to the face of the wall, or to the back of the, the panels, and they put stone on top of it. So it basically, uh, reinforces itself and supports something.
Know what they use back there to hold it back in?
Sure, yeah. Um, you know, there's a lot going on in the field, but there's also a lot of fabrication. Um, you know, steel girders are being fabricated in North Carolina. Um, sign panels, sign bridges are being fabricated. The, uh, wall panels, which is what you saw just a second ago, are going in daily on ramp D now, and they're being delivered weekly. They're being fabricated in Georgia. Um, and then sign panels and structures and lighting as well being fabricated. Uh, critical path items for the next six months, and we'll touch on some of these here in just a second. Um, you know, ramp D, which I didn't have a picture of because it's just starting to come up, uh, starting now. That's the, that's on the northwest quadrant of the project. Traffic shifts and departures and detours. We'll talk about that in just a second. Um, high ends and westbound roadway. Right now, the traffic is in its original, uh, position on five, five sixty-five. It'll be shifted towards the median to allow all the work to go right up next to the roadway. Um, and those barriers that are out there now will be shifted as well to protect the work zone and the workers. And then the median foundation, which will be the median supports for the steel girders that are coming in, and then the steel girders, which will be a fall delivery. Um, we're currently in phase two A of construction, and this kind of shows, um, the work zones. So this will be August, September, probably late August, will shift traffic towards the median, away from the edge of payment. And we'll do all the work outside of what's being done now on the north side that can't be done with the traffic where it is today. You know, here's the work zone here. Um, the traffic will be, and this is just five sixty-five westbound. Obviously, traffic will be shifted towards the median. And then we'll hit phase three, which is the median construction in October, more than likely. And then the work zone will be in the median. Here's the work zone there, and, um, traffic will still be shifted on, I'm sorry, traffic will be shifted on five sixty-five westbound to the outside at that point, to the newly constructed lanes on the outside. And then we talked about this a little bit, but there'll be a phase five detour that, uh, will probably come November, December, and that's when the steel girders are going in over the lanes of traffic. There'll be two phases, one westbound and one eastbound. Um, and traffic will be detoured on the adjacent interchanges, and then your fleece department will be helping with, uh, you know, the traffic control associated with that. Like we've mentioned previously, we'll look at, uh, phasing signals. We've got it timed for, that's kind of vague, I apologize, for Sunday through Thursday between eleven and five AM. So traffic should be minimal, and, you know, we've looked at the traffic impacts of that and feel like they will be minimal. So all that being said, I mean, the project is, um, progressing well. A few surprises, nothing all that unexpected besides the tanks, I suppose. Um, you know, we're on track schedule-wise and, um, expect a lot of coordination. We'll continue to coordinate with Michael and Steve, um, to, uh, manage construction, manage, you know, media, manage press releases, and then without it as well. So beyond that, any questions?
Just still on track for January twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've been watching it go together.
It is.
Looks like an interchange now, doesn't it?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank y'all.
Okay, now we are at the portion of the agenda for public comments pertaining to agenda-related items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. You need to state your name and district and the agenda item to which you're speaking to. Please reserve any general comments until the end of the meeting at the designated portion of the agenda. We have one comment card turned in on agenda-related comments, and that is from Bernadette Mayer, District Five.
Good evening. I'm Bernadette Mayer from Heatherwood subdivision District Five. Okay, so first on legal, um, the Crown Castle Fiber with a ten-year agreement. Um, I guess there's been maybe possibly a little bit of litigation, other state, whatever. I'm not really sure how, um, the strength of the legal agreement is for Madison. If, um, this has been used in other Alabama communities, how it's been sourced, I mean, what may that be the company to do, whatever? Um, is all the council well-versed on Crown Castle Fiber, and they're comfortable, you're all comfortable with them? Um, the small cell placement, cell placement on poles and all that kind of stuff, is, if that's something that, you know, that gets put up, and then if they need something else, and then that stays? Or how does that all work as far as that goes? Um, um, just a lot of questions. And then about the setbacks and, you know, and drilling holes and various things, I, you know, there's just an awful lot with that, and I'm not really sure if a ten-year agreement is something that is favorable for, um, our city or not. So that, there's just a lot of questions with that. Okay, so on the recreational side, uh, the Integra Park LED lighting, okay, a hundred twenty-eight thousand... Okay, so on the recreational side, the Integra Park LED lighting, okay, a hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. Okay, so, you know, I know we spend a lot on all this new lighting and all these new fields and all these new areas and stuff. And, uh, and I'm not really sure with, and you know, especially because we have new facilities and I imagine getting better lighting in some of our, you know, current facilities that need better lighting. But, I mean, are we using a lot of these ballparks, soccer fields, other facilities for tournaments, drawing in people to our community? Or, and especially like all the improvements near town Madison. I know that's all part of, you know, drawing people to that area and having a great showplace, whatever, for that sort of thing. But I don't really know, it's not ever really been spelled out as to what the city, as far as revenue expectations, with people spending money on hotels and meals and shopping that come in for various things? Or just strictly Madison Recreation? I mean, and the thing is that anytime we draw people in, of course Huntsville benefits as much as we do just as Huntsville has certain things that, you know, could draw people that, you know, we obviously will also benefit from.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer, you're out of time.
Okay.
Thank you. We don't have any other public comment cards. So if anyone else from public want to address the council on agenda related items, please come forward.
Marjorie Daley, Carron's District, Resolution twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-eight. The Crown Castle, uh, Castle franchise for a ten-year contract. And it has clauses in there that they could transfer the ownership if it goes. I don't understand why this council is giving ten-year contracts. They should be left to the time you guys serve and then the next mayor should be, or mayor and council should be able to decide whether we should continue these contracts. In the, the contract is a very weak contract. This company has a lot of litigation on the internet. It's obvious that they sue cities because it's all over the internet. And there's numerous suits with Texas. So I would, you know, I think we need a stronger contract and less years. I think that we should limit it to two years. These are kind of two feet by fifteen inches on top of all the poles and all the R.O.W.s, the right of ways. And I can tell you that in Jersey City, twenty-five to thirty years ago, we did something like this. And the problem with it is, first of all, technology changes and gets much smaller. So we don't need these two feet by fifteen inch things hanging on our poles. Then they don't take them down, but they'll put another one. And then we have A.T.N.T. putting them, Comcast putting them, Nology putting them. They look hideous. This will be something that in five, ten years, we'll be looking up at it saying that is, looks terrible for our city. We need to worry about how our city progresses. And this is like a step backwards doing something like this with these two feet by fifteen inches. I have other things to talk about, but I'm really, uh, I think the contract is not strong enough to protect the citizens of Madison. Okay, Resolution two twenty-eight, um, this is going to, uh, the Geo cores, which I think is a great idea, but I think we also need ground penetrating radar so that we can see whether, you know, if there's streams under there. Okay, landscaping, two thirty-nine R, tidewater landscaping, it's downtown, there's sixty-five hundred contra, uh, I've looked this company up on the net and they have for hire and looking for people. So do they even have the staff to do this and who owns the company? Then there's the Integra lighting, which do we really need this? Is this for the pickleball courts? Is this going to be for fire and safety? Or are we now worried about recreation and lighting for these pickleball courts? Is this really a need or is it just pork? Okay, and then, okay, I think that's on a public. And then, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Daley, you're out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and state your name and your district.
Jennifer Coe, Ashley State District Five, Council President. I'm here before you to speak about ordinance number twenty twenty-three, one twenty-eight, authorizing a franchise agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC. Is this the first or the second reading on this?
Second.
Okay, I wasn't here and I wasn't able to try and get to this until it's almost too late. All right, we do need a public hearing for this. The agreement allows the Crown Castle LLC to use the public right of way to install utility facilities and utility poles. Please clarify with respect to the poles, if they're going to be, it's unclear in the agreement whether they are for the existing utility poles that we already have because it says in the agreement that it would not be, um, they would not be using anything belonging to the municipality. So I'm confused about that. And please provide the public with a detailed map or diagram of what wireless facilities are being installed and where. Under the scope of agreement, the city is granting Crown Castle permission to enter upon the right of way and construct, attach, install, operate, remove, relocate, repair wireless facilities. How many nodes will the city of Madison be granting to this third-party entity? Since there are like three hundred to five hundred feet between each node. So there could be potentially thousands of these nodes for these small cell devices to communicate. And, you know, what appurtenance will they be installed on? Since Crown Castle is not a provider, they are renting the infrastructure through contracts. That's how they make money. Since we know A.T.N.T. already has an agreement to do this, how much of this is redundant? Um, how many redundancies do we have here? How much cable installation, you know, do we need before it all becomes obsolete? As Ms. Daley has already stated. Um, and part, part of the agreement, um, I'd like to know what constitutes a wireless facility because the agreement is including coaxial, it's metallic or fiber optic. Because it says it's an agreement for fiber. This seems misleading and are we going to get five G? Are we sufficiently aware that the S.E.C. rules regarding an incomplete application for permits? How many permits will they need to be issuing all at the same time? Are we aware of the copious litigation that's already been mentioned? I mean, there's Crown Castle sue cities and cities sue Crown Castle.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward and state your name and district. Seeing none, we will close public comments on agenda related items and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Finance committee has reviewed all periodic, um, and current bills to be paid and, uh, all their things to be in order. I'd like to move, move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussions? Ready for a vote?
I, I do want to note that there's a eleven thousand dollar, um, donation from Madison County Commission for, for the fire department.
Thank you.
That's it.
Ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Next presentation through report, beginning with Mayor Finley.
All right, well, two quick things. First, I met with Mark Highsmith, who is Chairman of the Citizens Advisory Council. Karen, if I'm not mistaken, meeting tomorrow night, six o'clock here at City Hall. Is that correct?
I don't know for sure.
I think it is.
Mayor, I think they, they actually meet over at the library.
Library, okay. So six o'clock at the library. One thing Mark talked about is continuing agendas. I know one of the things we had talked about was how often meetings should occur. And so one of the things he's possibly looking at is going, right now, looking for subjects to go maybe towards a quarterly meeting versus a monthly meeting. And then try to tie it together, not only with anything police related, but safety related for communities and individuals kind of on a seasonal basis, which gives them as, as far as new data each time to, to talk about in addition to some of the other things they have. So meeting tomorrow night and then they, as a collective body, will be looking possibly to do things a little bit differently. Secondly, Track Bandits are back in town. They start tomorrow night at Toyota Field and they're here for six nights. And with that said, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. District one.
Yes, ma'am. The Madison Arts Alliance has two more concerts that will be held between now and our next council meeting. This Thursday, the Jimmy Henderson Trio, they play blues, rock originals and rock covers. They'll be playing at seven P.M. at Home Place Park and that's July twenty-seventh. And then on August tenth, Kelly Joyner, who is a woman solo artist, she will be performing that day. Both concerts start at seven P.M. There're going to be food trucks there. If you're concerned about the sun, their area is shaded and there really isn't a bad seat in the house. So I encourage you to come for our last two concerts. Wanted to thank Public Works for all of their work during last week's storm. As my mom would say, it was a doozy. We had several trees down in our neighborhood and your neighborhood probably also has a lot of trees and limbs down. And I've already gotten a couple of emails about when is it going to get picked up? And I would just ask everyone to please be patient. That was just a heck of a storm. I was told it was actually an F zero. I'm, I'm not sure if that is official or not, but there was just a lot of damage in our area. And just be patient, please, with the trucks coming around to pick up that debris. Got one question on redistricting. People got an email asking, when does redistricting take effect? And that will be in twenty twenty-five, the next municipal election. So we all will continue to support our current districts. And then in twenty twenty-five, whoever is campaigning will campaign for those specific districts. So you still have your current council member and just know that the district lines will change and the election will be in August twenty twenty-five. And school starts next Thursday and a lot of us are excited about that. And maybe some are not as excited, but I just hope everybody has a, a great school year, teachers, staff, students, all. It's a good, healthy year, back together. And that's all I have.
Thank you. District two?
No, no business.
District three?
No, no business.
District four?
I've got a couple of things. I've got Resolution two oh two-three, two thirty-nine R. It is, uh, first coming out of, uh, City Council Special Projects. They replace all the plant material that died over the winter downtown, um, at Madison. Tide Water's our current provider and they, uh, they quoted this out. I think somebody, I think they're based out of Savannah, Georgia. I don't know who the owner is. And they got thirteen locations across the southeast. But anyway, they've been maintaining all of our property for the past three or four years. And so anyway, they've, um, they've put in a bid for this and they're like, it's fair, it's fair numbers. So I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion?
Just to clarify, so you're going to be, they're going to take up all the old stuff?
All the dead plants.
Clean it all up and then come back and what are they replacing it with?
The same, the same thing that was original design.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And motion passes.
And then the second thing is, um, Sandy Patel with, uh, Rotary Club of Madison is wanting to put some exercise equipment around the walking track at Dublin and they've raised over half the money and they've asked us to support some of it. So, um, John has kind of been heading this up, but he's out of town and asked me to, um, ask for twenty-five, up to twenty-five hundred dollars to support the exercise equipment that'll be installed at Dublin Park on the walking track. And with that, I'd like to move, move to approve.
What is, what is the resolution number?
I wasn't able to ascertain a resolution number just yet in our book, uh, but Madam Clerk, I don't know if y'all have any idea if we can maybe skip a couple of numbers and one that, provide a number that we're confident would, would not be used. We're going to use, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-three?
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
All right, with that, I'd like to move, move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, any discussion? I know we talked about this at the work session last week. All right, ready for a vote on number twenty twenty-three dash three hundred? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. I'm going to go and go next for District number five. I have one item, Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two thirty-one dash R, authorizing the video recording and archiving of our work session on July nineteenth.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And motion passes. District number six.
I would just like to remind everyone that they are going to be having another public hearing work session for the redistricting. Anyone that is interested in commenting on that, making changes or completely agreeing and accepting it, please come to the meeting. It's going to be from four to five thirty here in council chambers on October fourteenth, excuse me, August fourteenth. So it's a good time for you to come and let us know what you think of the districts. And that is all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you. And we do not have any board or committee appointments. We will now move to public hearings. And the first resolution for public hearing deals with the assessment of weed liens on the following properties located at four fifty Oakland Road during the summer of twenty twenty-two pursuant to the city's local weed abatement act, number twenty sixteen dash two oh five, as adopted by the Madison City Council, ordinance number twenty sixteen dash one thirty-five. The city cut overgrown grass and weeds on these properties and now it's time for the city council to consider the imposition of the city's cost as weed liens on the property. We've been presented with itemized reports showing the cost of removing these weed nuisances. These reports have been previously sent to the owners of the lots. We'll now have a public hearing on this matter. Is there any owner of this property in the audience who wishes to address the reports? Anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the reports of the cost? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and take up the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second, Ms. Coe, or do you have any other?
No other information other than that building did properly send out the notices, so there was proper notice. And after having done that, building asked that we prepare this resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two twenty-four and everything's in order for, for the vote.
How much is the lien?
Uh, you're asking the one question that I didn't have written over my.
Just out of curiosity. It's all right.
I apologize.
It's okay.
I can, I can get it for you.
They're usually like seven to nine hundred-ish. It's okay, Brian. It's all right.
We, we have a copy of the resolution and then.
Sorry about that. It's eight hundred forty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? All right, we have a motion in a second. You have anything else, Devon? Okay. All right, hold on, let's go ahead and take a look. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Okay, next, Devon, we have Resolution number twenty twenty-three dash two thirty-three dash R.
Good evening, the Department has one item for a public hearing this evening. We have a solution number twenty twenty-three dash one forty. This is a request from Ratan Om Incorporated, doing business as Madison Chevron Star Fuel. The business has requested, uh, off premises bearing one license for their location at eighty-nine oh seven Madison Boulevard. The reason that this business is applying for this license right now is because the business has been sold and is under new ownership. Everything is in order for the city council to consider this item.
Thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Is there, is the property owner here? Do they not want to speak there?
They're not.
Okay, we're going to open public hearing. Every member has five minutes to speak at a public hearing. Please state your name and district. And we have one person. Devon, you want to step to the side for a second?
Five o'clock now, five minutes, isn't it?
It is five minutes.
Okay, so I'm concerned about my time because the last public hearing, I asked questions, I was. questions, I was, my time was cut off, and I never got the answer. I even put in a Freedom of Information request, which they are going to the wayside. I have ones back from October.
What does this have to do with this public hearing on the Bureau?
I'll get to it.
You'll get to it.
I have five minutes.
You have, but you need to address the actual hearing note. It's not a general group session.
I will. So my question is, what is it now? If you sell a business that's selling beer and wine, you could just put the license in your pocket? Because obviously, he no longer has a premises if he's selling it. So are we doing now pocket liquor license, where people can hold on to the liquor license in their pocket, not having a physical place to put the license? So I'd like that explained, but I'd also like to yield my time, because I want the answer, so that if I have another question, I can come up, and I have four minutes left of my time. So I'd like to yield. And that was the problem, that the last, I still have not received the definition for this streaming thing that we're going to be now charging people. And again, I ask, will nonprofits like iVote have to pay a fee under that license? I have never gotten the answer. I did Freedom of Information request. I don't know what more I can do.
And this is not the best for the public hearing. Public hearing is just about the beer and wine license. That is it. Is that the only question that you have?
Maybe. I get five minutes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah. Are we going to now give these licenses out to anybody if they sell a business? They get to hold the license in their pocket till when? How long is it held? Do we charge an extra fee to hold the license in your pocket when you don't have a physical store to put it in, and you sell the premises? So those are my questions, and I'd like to yield my time at three minutes.
This is all the time that you'll have. You can ask all the questions that you have, and then we'll close public hearings.
But you don't give us the answers. We deserve answers.
That's not what a public hearing is for. The public hearing is to hear you. So you have two minutes and 50 seconds to finish anything else you want to say.
I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to address the council with regard to this particular public hearing? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close public hearings. Now, Yvonne, I don't know if you have answers to any of these questions, or?
Sure. When the business is being sold, so the business is considered, and the previous business owner has sold his business or passed the business to somebody else, the business, the previous business is considered dissolved. Hence, the business license that they have before to, it's no longer active, it's no longer valid. So the new business owner, the person that is taking ownership of the new business, is required by us and by the state that they apply for a business license with us. And if they're selling alcohol, they are required to have a new business license with the ABC and us.
Perfect. So the old business dissolves, license gets away, and then the new business has to apply and be accepted for a new one?
And, yes, that is correct.
Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, now we have the resolution. We have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? We already had one, right? We already had a motion. They jumped the gun, that's right. And then we opened the hearing. Now we have a motion and a second. Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? Motion passes. Thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you.
All right, department reports, beginning of engineering.
Okay. First, I have Resolution Number 2023-228R. This is authorizing a professional services agreement with Geo Solutions LLC in an amount not to exceed $1,850 for geotechnical determination for Church Street, Arnett Street, Front Street, and College Street. This will be project Number 2023-020, and that's to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve.
Motion and second. Any questions or discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Next.
All right. Next, I have Resolution Number 2023-234R. This is authorizing purchase of property for the Browns Ferry Road Culvert Project in the amount of $19,600 to be paid to owner Chrissy Nicholson.
Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion and second by Roblesky?
Yes. And I do have a question. I'm looking at the agenda packet to see where this was. Can you tell me, is it between like Hughes and the Dog Park, or is it?
This is the section of Browns Ferry Road that connects Balch to Gillespie. So this is about halfway through there. So it's going to be northwest-ish of Most Chapel Road. So that's where the very narrow crossing is, that we have some.
General Lynn's been here a couple of times with the accident that happened, very passionate.
Right, right.
That's that bridge, not this green that bridge.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping for.
The bridge about much right there, close to the edge of pavement. It's decorated up pretty good with some reflectors, but, you know, trailers and traffic like that tends to still hit it. So we're widening that out, making it nice and wide, wide enough possibly to, whatever else that we'll need to put through there, you know, going forward.
Right. That is a dangerous turn there.
So this is, this is, this is track one. This is the north side. So you'll see me again in a couple of weeks as we try to put forth a resolution to purchase track two from the HOA to the south there.
HOA for Walden, or?
What's the name of the situation?
Search and Station.
The other side of the street.
I'm sorry, Heritage Station, your side. Okay, very good.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any other questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Um, aye.
Sorry. You're good. Keep, you're good.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Next.
Okay. And finally, I have Resolution Number 2023-237R, authorizing the total scope of the ALDOT agreement for Madison Boulevard Improvement Project. We've already brought this resolution to you guys in the past. It's already been approved as it goes through the various hoops through ALDOT. There's some verbiage that had to be changed on that. It wasn't exactly right. So this resolution, this is the resolution to resolve that, basically.
And if I could interject, we talked with ALDOT to ask them specifically what was wrong with our past resolutions, and they couldn't really give us anything. But they said that what we sent over was fine, and it didn't, there was no new information, no new obligations. So basically, I was told that they needed this resolution to quote-unquote internally process it. So we gave them what they asked for, which is just the same resolution again, to be perfectly honest.
We call that delay of game.
Well, we did it to delay it from being, delaying it anymore, so.
Okay. We have a motion and second.
Move to approve.
Okay, motion and second. Ready for vote? Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Legal.
Thank you. Legal has asked to prepare proposed ordinance Number 2023-128, authorizing a franchise agreement with Crown Castle Fiber LLC for small cell placement installation of fiber lines, the first reading being on July 10th of 2023. I think I will start by addressing some of the questions that was posed to the council earlier. First, there's two real sections as far as what this company is going to be doing. One's going to be laying the fiber lines in the ground at right-ofways, but that's not the crux of what they're doing. For the most part, what they're doing is putting these small cell antennas on existing city poles in order to enhance 5G networks. So basically, the franchise agreement has the understanding that once you put these fiber lines underground, they're there, they're not going to rip them back out. So usually, what we've done in the past, and what we've, I think is a good idea to continue with those types of agreements, is to start at a 10-year term, because these are going to be permanent agreements that may need to be renegotiated at different times, but we're not going to stop and not have them have the lines and rip them out of the ground. As far as some of the concerns that we heard tonight, I think it's very important to point out that this franchise agreement is kind of the foot of the door as far as allowing them to actually bury fiber lines. But we have a pretty extensive section of our city code that actually regulates the actual placement of the small cell antennas. So what's going to happen is, if you look at Section 8 of the city code dash 98, basically, that's where the actual antennas will be permitted. How many can you have? How high can they be? You know, there's also fines and penalties for if they don't, you know, conform with the code. And also, it has some rights for us to go in and inspect these from time to time. So everything that we do with this franchise agreement has to be understood that it works in concert with what we already have in the code, and is very well thought out as far as how we regulate them. So if you just simply look at the franchise agreement, you're not going to get the full story of how we regulate and make sure that these small cells are properly permitted, placed in proper areas. That's going to have to be looked at individually, one by one. So as we sit here today, I can't tell you how many nodes are going to be appear, but each one of them is going to have to be permitted, and each one of them is going to have to pass a rigorous evaluation in order to be placed. Next, I understand that there were some concerns that this company had been involved in a lot of litigation. I cannot give you a complete survey of every piece of litigation that this company might have been involved in. One that was forwarded to me, the only one I'm aware of, would have been against Pasadena, Texas. And apparently, that litigation involved, there's a federal statute, the Telecommunications Act, which they basically sued saying that they were operating under a Texas act, and that the federal act preempted the state act. And so I can't tell you much about the substance of that case. I just glossed over it. But that's why they were suing them, basically saying that the Texas statute went too far, and they should, the telecommunications act preempted them. So that, I hope, addresses some of the concerns. But the crux of this is, this is for 5G networks, and expand that out. And if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Do you have a motion and second first?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion and second. Any questions from?
There's also a question about the Secretary of State. Was that one taken care of to verify that they? I am thoroughly convinced that they properly are registered with the state of Alabama. It's right there on the Secretary of State's website. And if you go to the Public Service Commission, they actually issued them what is called a certificate of public convenience and necessity, which they would have never offered them or given them if they were not, in fact, registered with the state. And they've basically been registered with the state for 20 years in different entities. But the newest entity that we contracted with was, has been, has identity ID number 00-519981, and that was as of June 1st, 2018.
Any other questions for Mr. Kilborn? Okay, we have a motion and second.
Real quick, I mean, was it two years ago, three years ago, that we had this conversation? And we basically, I think it was Verizon and AT&amp;T, and they came in, and we had our attorney, previous to Bron and I think another attorney, consulting attorney, they had theirs attorney. And basically, it's SEC that mandates this. And it's exactly the case that Bron's talking about. If you have a federal law and a state law, one supersedes the other. It's not the state. So that's kind of what that case is about.
And I should also let you know that we also continue to contract with an outside party that helps us evaluate some of these applications, if they come in for, say, cell towers, for small antenna. So we also have that expertise that we're relying on as far as asking the questions and inspecting these, and to confirm that they are, in fact, being placed in the right area, et cetera. So that's another resource that we have.
So my point is saying that is basically, you know, we're kind of, going to have to do what we got to do. We can't tell Redstone Arsenal if they've got to move either, so.
Are there any other questions or comments?
My only thought is, for 10 years, because technology has changed so much, will any of these things be out of date anytime soon? Or is that anybody's guess? I mean?
Well, I will say this, that as far as putting the lines under the ground, you know, that's just a physical, you know, the line's going to be under the ground, and then it's there, and it's a matter of, you know, when that agreement ends or not. But when it comes to the changes that may occur to our regulation of everything that's going to be placed as for a small cell, well, we can change that ordinance as technology changes. So I don't think that what we have here as far as the franchise agreement, because it's kind of glass half empty, half full. The franchise agreement has been kind of criticized because it doesn't have enough meat to it to explain what we're going to do five years. But the reason for that is we have our ordinance, and we have the outside consultants to evaluate those, so that they can move and change in accordance with technology. Whereas, this is really more addressing the fiber lines underneath the ground in the right-ofways, if that makes sense.
Okay. Any other questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Next.
All right. Next, Legal has asked to prepare proposed ordinance Number 2023-240. This is authorizing Madison Utilities' request to dispose of .0007 acres of property located on Walltran Highway that they're no longer using. Essentially, what this was, was they had a trans, I forget the terminology for it, but it's basically they had an interaction with Monrovia, and this is just a very small little area, and it's completely out of use now. And now the county's coming in and doing some work. And by doing this, the county basically takes over removing that, where it's no longer a responsibility of MU. So this was a last-minute addition on Thursday, but that's all they're being asked to do, is just have the county come in, take over this small portion of that acreage, just so they can remove that.
And this is just the first reading?
This is just the first reading. Thirty square feet.
Yeah, it was discussed at the Madison.
Thirty square, it's six by five.
It was discussed at the Madison Utilities meeting, and Madison Utilities is happy to dispose of that they're not using it. It does not really have a purpose for them, and they just assume not have to maintain it.
Thank you, Mr. Kilborn. Planning.
I'm not going to touch it.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor B.
This is proposed toward, and it's Number 2023-220. And this is for vacation of a portion of utility and drainage unit in the side yard at 120 Lake Crest Drive. And this is so that they can put in detached structure in their side yard. All of the entities have signed off, and we're asking for your approval.
Move to approve.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? Motion passes.
And the next item is also vacation utility and drainage unit. This affects lots 26 through 38 of the heights at Town Madison. You can see that red line there, which parallels Town Madison Boulevard. You may recall, we had another group of lots earlier this year. Basically, there's a 20-foot-wide utility and drainage unit. They're vacating 10, we would be vacating 10 feet of that. The remaining 10 feet is where a water line is located. And this is being requested due to the setbacks in that zoning district to accommodate the project. Everybody has signed off. We're asking for your approval as well.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion, questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Thank you, Recreation.
Good evening. I have Resolution 2023-2022-R, authorizing a contract with Base Line Sports Construction LLC in the amount of $128,253 for the lighting installation at the Hexagon facility. This is for the softball fields and pickleball courts, lighting systems that we previously bought and since all those.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion, second by Spears. Any questions for Corey? Discussion? Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford? And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, revenue.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes, thank you.
To approve.
All right, revenue.
Hello, we have, uh, proposed ordinance number twenty-three dash two-ten, and this is amending Chapter Ten of City Code to add next business license codes for a liquor manufacturer and media streaming distribution. The first reading for this item was on July tenth. I want to redefinition of, uh, the code, just to clarify some, uh, questions here. Uh, for, uh, the streaming distribution. This industry compromises establishments primarily engaged in publishing and/or broadcasting content on the internet exclusively. Examples are internet video broadcast, broadcasting sites such as podcasts and video gaming, internet book publishers, internet sports sites, internet entertainment sites, internet blog sites, um, there are some other ones, but that's pretty much what, uh, the businesses are engaged in. Most businesses need a combination of a license and permit from the state and local government to lo, legally operate. The requirements vary based on the business activities, uh, people that generate income, income from the activities, the, um, the pickleball, and want to treat it as a business, will need a local business license, and that's why we use this code. Um, nonprofit organizations including charities, churches, schools, legal aid providers, voluntary service organization, museums, they are, they do not need a business license, they do not operate as a business, therefore, they don't need a business license. This is just for people that, uh, operate, uh, as a business doing these activities.
Mm-hmm, for profit.
For profit, yes.
Okay.
Very good.
That's it. All right, do we have a motion in a second?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Robleski, second by Powell. Any discussion or questions?
I guess, real quick, I mean, if we didn't have this, and we didn't have it before, and those businesses were operating, there was just another class that went into other or missing, and that's where they were.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
And the motion passes, thank you, Vaughn.
Thank you.
Now, we have general public comments, each speaker is limited to three minutes, state your name and district. We have one comment card turned in by Bernadette Mayer.
Okay, I do wanna comment that we as the public are not coming to be argumentative or whatever, we're just coming to voice our opinion sometimes. Some of the city council people are, um, seem to have hostile attitudes, or, I don't know, I, I don't have any hidden agendas, so, um, I just wanna use up fifteen seconds of my time for that. Okay, so, I do, appointments on planning and finance committees, you know, to get a better representation of Madison, allowing new people to contribute to those, I think some consideration needs to be made for that. Um, I think there's been a lot of reliance on some core people for a long time, and I think some new voices would be helpful. The second item, a budget set aside, or that bucket list item of like three million dollars, um, that was discussed at a previous city council meeting, um, it sounds, I'm kinda drawing, and I'm not sure I'm getting the right picture, but I'm thinking it's, uh, for stadium improvements based on maybe the Major League Baseball directives. I just wanna point out that, of course, the largest investment in the stadium is the city of Madison, and of course, Major League Baseball is a very powerful business, you know, entity holder, and Ball Corp, of course, has interests with their team ownership, and obviously, they're wanting to, um, you know, work at, uh, operate at a profit or whatever, or whatever other i, reasons that Ball Corp, you know, has. Um, I know that you all have received something with the twenty-twenty-five Major League Baseball, some kind of directive, but I do wanna point out, on the stadium construction, okay, I'm sure Major League Baseball originally approved what our stadium was, and Ball Car, Corp was, uh, was satisfied with what, you know, we had, 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 and, and Madison put forth the best use of the stadium for this endeavor, for this double-A team. So, in the meantime, you know, there's been, um, three-hundred-thousand-a-year budget set aside for road improvements or whatever, stadium, stadium needs, and I know that you all used that money up this past season. I'm wondering, I'm hearing something about more skyboxes or something else that Major League Baseball wants, but Madison Stadium, in relation to twenty-twenty-five Major Baseball Directive, okay, there's some deal of being cooperative with them, and we don't wanna be an outlier as to, you know, not being cooperative, but Major League Baseball and Huntsville Stars moved from Huntsville, and Madison made the most reasonable chance for double-A baseball to come back into this fast-growing, relatively high-income household area, community, and in my own opinion-
Thank you, Ms. Mayer, for your answer.
Yeah, so anyhow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name.
Margie Daly, Karen's District. First of all, there were pages on the Google search of lawsuits. Apparently, our attorney didn't have enough time to look at them, and only looked at one, okay? These, this Crown Castle actually sued the members of the public in the city for speaking out against the hideous-looking antennas that this company put up in their town, and we asked how many nodes, you won't tell us that, they're allowed to put in their own poles, and they're drilling two-inch holes in all the pavement to put this wire through, this fiber or metallic coax, it, we don't really see 5G in the contract. I just wanna protect the city of Madison against devious contractors that are third parties just making money off other people. So, we're only looking to protect, and I'm very sorry to hear that the city attorney didn't have enough time to look at what was on the Google search on all the lawsuits to this company, and that we passed this without looking at, at the evidence that's out there of all their, their lawsuits suing other cities. And I just hope Madison doesn't get sued by this company, or, or us people speaking out from the public get sued as they have done in the past. I'm very sorry you didn't have the time. I called you at eight o'clock this morning to try to get this, as our mayor told me to call City Hall to find out. Instead, you come up here, and that, that's totally wrong, you only found one suit. I sent you a, a, one screenshot, but you could've went on the internet and looked it up. Okay, the next thing is about vacating all these drainage movements. We're vacating it here, vacating it here. Anybody notice that all of a sudden, the other areas are starting to flood? Is there any way that our city could get together with Madison County, Limestone County, Huntsville, and figure out what's going on with the sewage and drainage, and get together and talk to each other, instead of, we move drainage, it floods homes, it floods businesses? I would just like to see some more cooperation, instead of, you know, and our contracts are being written like swiss cheese. I really wanna protect all of us, all the citizens and the city of Madison, and instead, you know, this is what we get, I'm really sad about it, and I really wish that we would really start looking at what's on the internet, because the information is there, we're just not looking at it, and we're voting and approving, you know? Let's protect our city, we love our city.
Thank you, Ms. Mayer.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Please come forward.
I'm gonna be redundant, Jennifer Ho, Ashley State, District Five, Council President. That, the contract, or the agreement, does not state that it is 5G, it does not state it has to be fiber optic cable, it does not talk about where is this infrastructure going to be located, and how much of it is going to be redundant. How many more times does everyone have to have their front yard dug up again? And the permitting is an issue, because the FCC is cooperating with, with the providers and these third-party contractors to make the deployment of the thousands of these small cell devices happen faster, and I wish that we could have a public hearing and maybe talk about this before we just pass this. I guess it, it'll be effective tomorrow, and maybe we could reconsider this, this, uh, fiber optics or whatever.
Thank you. Uh, would anyone else like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close public comments, any other miscellaneous business or announcements? Okay, seeing-
Move to approve.
All right, we're gonna adjourn. Thank you.